Second every ten seconds, please. Pen and mark. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Barter State 2017. My name is Marty Akers. I'm the chairman. To my left, the vice chair, Mr. Cabeas. Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Hemel. Mr. Raydell. The clerk, to my right, Ms. Buques. Ahead of inspectional service, behind me, Mr. Duca. If you have a cell phone or a pager, can you put it on silent and vibrate, please? If anyone's gonna speak tonight, please stand up and take an oath. If you're gonna speak, or you think you might speak, please stand up and take an oath. Mr. Cabeas.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, all the truths I hope you got?
Thank you. On no business, case number Z seventeen sixty-one. One forty-nine Rockland Street. Is the applicant or his representative here?
It's a letter that you filed.
Oh, I didn't see it. I have a letter here dated today. Director and chairman, Quincy Donut Board of Appeal, fifty-five Hancock Street. A whole single-family reconstruction project on forty-nine Rockland Street, Quincy, Mass. Dear Chairman, board members, at the request of my client, Allison McLean, the Selberg and Associates Inc., DDA, request the project located at one forty-nine Rockland Street, Quincy, Mass., be withdrawn without prejudice for further review from Quincy's Donut Board of Appeals. Thank you for your attention in this matter. If you have any questions regarding this, please contact us off to your earliest convenience. Jane Kirk. Motion, please.
This is the chairman, matter number Z seventeen dash sixty-one. Allison McCullough for a special permit floodplain variance to reconstruct a single-family home on the premises number one forty-nine Rockland Street. I have a motion to withdraw it, please.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close. Some more. Further into tonight's agenda, no business. Case number Z seventeen seventy-one. Douglas Menz for being a finding to subdivide the lot and construct a single-family home forty-five Babcock Street. Counselor, just so you guys know, the counselor left these here. I gave everyone a new set of forms. We asked them very hard. Hearing, we asked that they make the house a little smaller, and it's really came back with a set of forms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Doug's Menz and the Menz family. I'm joined tonight by Doug and George Menz, and also Brian LaRoche, the architect. Brian was not here at the last time. He wasn't requested to be here, but I know that there were certain questions that were raised about the architectural aspects of the proposal. Brian is here to discuss those with us tonight if we have additional questions. As you know, we made a full presentation at the initial board meeting on July twenty-fifth. And as you know, we're seeking to essentially reaffirm a decision of the zoning board that was made back in the sixties to subdivide the ten thousand square foot parcel to two separate five thousand square foot parcels and construct a new single-family home. We talked about the design of the home at that time, which is essentially a two-and-a-half story home. The lot drops off in the back, and it exposes essentially the foundation of the basement, I guess, in the rear of the site, so making the property look taller from the rear of the site. And there were concerns raised by this board about not only the height of the building, but also the overall length of the house. The house is, was originally forty-eight feet in length, twenty-five feet in width. The house has now been reduced to thirty-eight feet in depth. So therefore, ten feet of the back of the house was taken off the house, made quite a bit smaller. And what Mr. LaRoche did in coordination with the site survey, Steve DeRoche, is they created information on A three, on the plan A three, where they identified the average grade of grade plane, and they measured the house from the average grade plane. Because the grading of the lot drops off dramatically in the rear of the site, what they did is they created what the average grade around the house, and they utilized that average grade plane line, and then measured the height of the house from that line. I think what's most important when you're looking at the height of the house is really from the front, from Babcock Street. And from Babcock Street to the roof lines is a total of thirty-six point one feet, the peak of the roof. On the plan, I believe it shows to the bottom of that roof, picture of the roof, which was twenty-five point two feet. And then there's an additional ten feet of height, or eleven feet of height from that point. So it would be thirty-six point one feet of height, which requires a variance from the dimensional requirements for height, only by one foot. We otherwise meet and comply with the ordinance requirements relative to setback and things of that nature. What we're seeking is a special permit for the floodplain characteristics of the site, and also the variance for the dimensional in that it's on a five thousand square foot lot. So as I said, Brian LaRoche is here. If you'd like to hear a little bit more of an explanation of the architecture, he's happy to make a presentation at here.
No, my main concern too is as long as that's covered coming down as it drops, the concealer did that, to cover the siding, the foundations. I have no questions right now. Anyone else?
At this time, no. Thank you. It is what we want.
Yeah. Thank you. Request, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think that they've done everything their best. How many people in favor?
Can I also be voted in favor?
Likewise.
Favor.
Good.
On the motion, please. This is the chairman, matter number Z seventeen dash seven-one. The Menz for a variance finding to subdivide the lot with two lots to construct a single-family home on the newly created lot of the premises under forty-five Babcock Street. I make a motion to grant the variance on the site.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close. Some more. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Under no business. How many people are here for Dunkin' Donuts? All right. Case number Z seventeen eighty. Quincy Dunkin' Donuts, thanks for special permit, finding to open a Dunkin' Donuts facility and occupy twenty-one hundred square feet of an existing building on the premises of five eighty-two, five ninety-eight Washington Street. The other representatives here. Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Edward Fleming, on behalf of Quincy Donuts Inc., the applicant in this matter for property at five eighty-eight Washington Street. This is the former home of Wild Lily's Burgers. Wild Lily's Burgers occupied the site for a number of years and recently closed, and the site became available for lease. The property is owned by David and Roger Chu, who are the operators of the Cathay Pacific and also own other properties in the city. And they approached and spoke with Dunkin' Donuts about the opportunity that may be available at the site, and Quincy Donuts has placed the property under agreement, or under a leasing agreement with the Chews, to occupy the property for a new Dunkin' Donuts facility. Like I said, the property is located at five eighty-eight Washington Street. The matter of the area is zoned as a Business B. Business B, as you know, is a commercially zoned district, which runs all along Washington Street. Commercially zoned district in Business B allows for a number of variety uses, including retail, restaurant-type uses, that have occupied the site for a number of years. In addition to that, in years past, I believe there was a drive-thru that operated actually from a drive-through facility at that location. Wild Lily's did away with that when they occupied the site, but otherwise it's been used as a commercial site. In the rear of the site, the property, the area is zoned Residence B. There's a number of different residential uses also along the site. On Hershey Place, that runs off Washington Street next to the site, is zoned actually Business B and then Residential, although it's occupied by all residential homes, and all their area in the back is residential. What we're here before the board far is treefold. We're seeking a special permit under seventeen point nine four, which is a special permit regulations of the ordinance. We're led to that from Title seventeen three point one point four, which is the appendix and Table of Use Regulations, Section G, which regulates drive-through uses. Although in a restaurant use is an allowed use at this location, drive-through facilities for any use require a special permit for this board, and that's why we're here tonight. We're also here tonight seeking relief from the signage ordinance. I provided as part of the packet a full signage plan, which I reviewed with Mr. Duca beforehand, and we'll have a professional go through that. Mr. Sean Donovan of Viewpoint Signs will review the signage provisions with me in more detail in a moment. In addition to that, I'm requesting a finding from Title seventeen point three point four point three, seeking a finding to change the use and the layout of the site, and also allow for two retail uses at this location, which I'll talk about in a moment. I'm joined tonight by Victor and Octavio Caballo. Octavio's not here tonight, but Victor is here from Quincy Donut Inc. Brian Hack and Brad Langley from Dunkin' Donuts Corporate are here. Sean Donovan is here from Viewpoint Sign. And as I said, Sean will talk about the signage in more detail in a moment. The Caballos in Quincy Donut Inc. actually own a number of facilities, not only in the city, but in other communities as well. They're a wonderful operator, very well respected throughout the city, have appeared before the licensing board on licenses a number of times before, and have a great reputation in the city and give back to the community on a regular basis. In addition to this location, they also own the original Dunkin' Donuts location on Southern Ottery and the facility on the corner of Southern Ottery and Washington Street, as well as the property on Center Street, which they took over from another operator a number of years ago. This is a wonderful opportunity, honestly, to pick up a site that's ideally situated for Dunkin' Donuts, and I'll talk about that in more detail in a moment. The new facility of the property on which the site will be located at five eighty-eight Washington Street is a forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty square foot site over an acre. It's a large piece of property, and it's improved, as I said, by a commercial building, which consists of about thirty-eight hundred square feet. As I indicated before, it's had a number of commercial uses, most recently the Wild Lily's Burger. The new Dunkin' facility will occupy approximately eighteen hundred square feet of the facility, and the remaining portion of the facility will be utilized and occupied by another retail user who has not been decided upon yet. The Dunkin' operator, Quincy Donuts, will have the opportunity to lease out or sublease this space to another retail user, who, if they need licensing or other approval, will have to be back before this board seeking that relief at that time. The new Dunkin' facility seeks to operate from five AM to ten PM. They will provide interior seating for approximately ten patrons within the facility, and they have about thirty-seven parking spaces in the site that's newly designed. All the site layout is shown in detail on the site plan. This is a modified site plan and also a landscaping plan that shows some of the landscaping amenities that will be added to the site as well. This new Dunkin' facility is the first of its kind. I know we've had a lot of Dunkin', so it's Dunkin' Donuts facilities in Quincy, but to hear this was the first of its kind, I think is an important feature, because Dunkin', because they've made some changes to their branding, they've chosen to open this new brand facility at this location in Quincy, because it's the home of Dunkin' Donuts, as we all know. This new facility will go by the name of Dunkin', and as you see on the signage, not Dunkin' Donuts, but Dunkin'. It will brand new colors, a new style, and new branding opportunities for Dunkin'. This is, and most importantly about this facility as part of the drive-through, is that this will provide for two mobile order lanes, which allows you to preorder your drink or your beverage before you enter into the property, the facility, and drive through the lane, swipe your card, drive to the window, and pick up your order without utilizing the speaker that you would normally do in a drive-through facility. The new drive-through facility, therefore, will provide for one-way circulation around the site from Washington Street. You'll enter the facility on the right side of the building. You'll travel to the rear of the site, where you'll split into two lanes, and then into three lanes. At this particular location, there will be a speaker box that will allow you to order your drink, if you haven't done so beforehand through a mobile order, but the other two lanes will be just purely mobile orders, meaning you won't be speaking with anyone when you get there. You'll simply have pre-ordered your drink. You'll swipe your card or punch in your code to indicate that you're there, and you'll drive to the window on this side of the facility, and then exit the site. Jack Gillen, who was hired to do the traffic report, because this is a busy corridor, as we all know, Washington Street's very well-traveled, seventy-five percent of the traffic that will come to this site in the morning, as per Jack Gillen's report, will come from the south. Therefore, the location of this particular facility on the right-hand side of Washington Street is ideally suited. In addition to that, to its location, it's also ideally suited in that it's so deep, in that it allows vehicles to fully pull into the site and travel to the back of the site. And by doing that, it allows the site to create a seventeen-car queue. So in a worst-case scenario, it would allow seventeen cars to queue into this lane. Dunkin' facilities throughout the area, and many of them, and some of the older facilities have concerns about problems with some of the queuing. I know on Franklin Street, there's some difficulty with the queuing, because it doesn't have sufficient queuing and allow cars to pull all the way into the site. This site is unlike any of the others, in that it allows the vehicles to pull fully into the site and allows for a seventeen-car queue. But in addition to that, it's on the right side of the road, so that it's picking up seventy-five percent of its traffic coming from the south, pulling easily into the site without crossing across other lanes of traffic. And Jack Gillen's report also indicates that the majority of those cars that do that, or almost all of the cars that do that, but again, about seventy-five to eighty percent will then take a right when they leave the site, as they're heading into Boston or into the north for the morning. The main source of Dunkin's business is typically during the morning rush hour traffic. And so therefore, the hours of operation from the five AM to ten PM are important to them, but primarily will be utilized and busiest during the morning hours, as you know, as these facilities operate. The mobile lanes really allow for a couple of different things. One, it eliminates the need for any kind of noise emanating from the speaker box. The speaker was located as far away from the homes that are located, Hershey Lane, or Place, I'm sorry. Hershey Place runs along here, and I know some neighbors are here from this community and also in the rear. So the goal was to remove the speaker as far away from their homes as possible, and hence why they located it in this particular lane. But the goal of this facility and the mobile orders is to really direct people to utilize that service more than others, and therefore, they anticipate that the two mobile lanes would be the ones that will be used. But it allows, so one, it allows the elimination of the noise from the speaker box, because most people that will go through will preorder. And secondly, it moves the traffic through the drive-through at a quicker pace, in that they won't have a lot of cars sitting there and running while they're waiting to place their order. So therefore, they anticipate that the queue will not without build up like it typically does in some facilities. And the focus, again, on Dunkin', because of not only the name change, but also, which is really just being utilized in only certain facilities, it's not a complete name changes, but it's being utilized in certain facilities, is that it's an on-the-go, preorder, drink-related business, meaning that's the concentration of the business is really to get people to focus on the coffee, essentially, and those products that are available. So they anticipate that the queues for these lanes will move quickly and move through the site without incident. All of these, all of the plans that have been presented to you tonight have been professionally designed by a number of different professionals. Steve DeRoche prepared the site plan. In addition to the preparation of the site plan, Steve also reached out to the engineering department and spoke with Chen. I know there may be a comment letter from Chen in the file. He raised a couple of questions about drainage, and Steve's already spoken with him and will continue to work with him on any concerns that he may have. A traffic report, as I indicated, was professionally done by Jack Gillen, the traffic engineer. There's about a seventeen-page report there, but I'll tell you, the majority of the report is really within a two-page summary that identifies really the things that I just mentioned, bond being the volume of traffic coming from the south, the volume of traffic taking right-hand turn, and that the seventeen-car queue will be more than sufficient to allow for the traffic to build up within the site and not back up onto the street. And then lastly, but most importantly, I think, when it comes to the neighbors that are here tonight, is that after a neighborhood meeting that Brad Pearl held at, right at the building itself, where concerns were raised by some of the neighbors about the noise and the intrusion of their single-family home, and concerns really about the speaker box, the applicant actually went back and hired a professional landscape architect. There's a professional landscape architect plan there that identifies the number of plantings that will be added. But what's most important about it is that initially, when we met with the neighbors, the dumpster was located here. The dumpster has now been located at the other side of the parking lot, furthest away from the residential neighbors. The buffer, a landscape buffer area that surrounds the site both along Hershey Place and also in the back, was widened significantly, and there was significant landscape plantings that were added to the plan, all specifically done and designed to address the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. We have this thing.
Just so I know, the dumpster?
Yes.
In the original one, it was on the right. You moved it to the left, to the left, and moved to the right.
It was on the left, and we moved it over to the right. And on the right.
And this is the new.
They moved the dumpsters.
Oh, sorry. That's the signage plan. I apologize for that.
All right.
But the site plan does show that it was moved over, and that's our intention, is to move it over to the right side of the site, away from the neighbors. So that, those changes, and this dense landscaping that's added to the site, we hope, is, I can tell you, was specifically done to be responsive to the neighbors. The struggle always exists between commercial and residential. Every residential, every commercial, you know, the neighborhood or zone district has a residential butter at some point, and the goal is to try to work cooperatively. The concern and the comments that were raised and came back to us is about whether or not we could shorten or pull the drive-through away from the back and towards the building. But what that does is it causes the queue from the drive-through to back up, because we lose all this depth in this, that allows the seventeen cars to queue. It would be an irresponsible move on the part of the applicant to do so, and so what we tried to do instead of that is to really dense up this landscaping around the site to try to, you know, reduce the impact as much as we could. So that's the, that's an overview of the applicant's presentation tonight. I would like to call on Sean Donovan from Viewpoint Design, just to kind of walk through the signage, so that the board is very familiar with the signage.
All right. Everyone has a copy of the signage package?
Yes.
Sean Donovan from Viewpoint Sign in audience. So going to the sign code, we're going to be going over it on a couple of ideas. First, we'll talk about the wall signs. Before identifying the signs, we can do the word Dunkin', and then the DD. We go over a little bit, but what we're trying to do is keep the DD, but that's important to represent a brand, how it's represented, sort of where we drop in donuts. And then on the sign elevation, we're adding some additional signage. If you can see, the American runs on Dunkin', that'll be on the drive-through side. What, I'm sure you have them in. We're gonna start with this one. This one here would only be seen while you're in the drive-through lane. There's two of them. The Ryan Brew, enjoy repeat, and then the American runs on Dunkin'. These would be viewed by customers already in the drive-through lane dedicated. So in the bylaws calls, you have a certain amount of signage for the public to see on public way, which would be the front of the building. And if it faces the street, you will allow additional signage on the street facing side. For these two, they're said in the property, the only people that'd be viewing them would be patrons already committed to the drive-through lane, so we'll be looking for some relief on these, since that wordage would assume the activity.
And not eliminate.
Not eliminate. No, they'd just be dimensional letters. They're not. And then, we've got reviewing the site signage. So we'll start off first with the pylon. All right. Right now, this freestanding pylon structure with the signage is about just under a hundred square feet. So if goes over, we allow, what would be looking for as relief, to allow the hundred-square-foot signage? Or would the board consider the monument structure and then the signage as a separate? It's a little tricky on that compared to your traditional signage with the pole and sign and the square foot upon it is a little bit different.
How much override?
Well, one of the bylaws, I want to say, was probably about twenty-five percent, maybe. Now, there's some flexibility in this, but again, like I said, with this design, we've got a lot of, like I said, monument space here, and then the signage is sort of subtle, and the monument goes natural, just the building and the architecture.
Thank you.
Is there a space there for the next tenant in the barn? Is that what that's?
The intent is no, at this point. It's not intended for the next tenant. It's Dunkin's design.
Just wanted to know, because there's a big space there.
Yeah, I think that's just by its design, not by the time it's built. Then we have the directional, which have the DD logo on, but it's, there's only two of them at your exit. These, the intent on these would be internal illumination. The style of this particular.
Which parts illuminate?
The letters illuminate, yeah.
Just the glass, not that big whole tan.
No, no. What that would be, that would probably be, my guess would be, we would instruct that out, let's say, like diabond or aluminum, something sturdy. The direct graphics would be push-through acrylic, and they would light around the edge.
The illumination itself would be?
Yeah, it'd be subtle. This is wayfinding directory. This would be one freestanding sign on site, which would be actually drive-through entrances, and again, it's wayfinding, but I believe you consider it signage. That was one of the things, too, on the, looking at the code, wayfinding versus signage, if wayfinding, it seemed to have a little bit more relief. And then we also have the drive-through clearance bar. Now, I would consider this wayfinding. I don't know if the board would see it the same way, because it's basically telling you where to go, you know, the order here or the drive-through mobile pickup, and then again, another wayfinding panel instructing. It's not additional added item for Dunkin' Donuts, it's more, I'm hoping to consider wayfinding.
They're not lit, correct?
Nope. You know, and if you're familiar with Dunkin' Donuts, you've seen these clearance bars. They obviously drive through clearance, sight warning, and then a crash to you. And the site plan just shows us where everything is positioned. I apologize for, we just had an old site plan in this city, but this is really just a location set back three or four years ago. Do you think that covered it?
The illuminated signs is really the front.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the Dunkin' and the DD would be channel-built letters, you know, pretty freestanding.
Any questions?
I have none of this. Thank you.
Also?
So that's essentially the applicant's presentation.
Alright, on the-
There's other representatives here, there's some representative from Duncan government, there's specific questions of Dunkin' Donuts.
I have some for them.
Yeah, I have some. Yeah.
Do you want to come up with a question from Duncan?
Why the name change? Why the name change?
That's all I have to say, that's all. That goes only to be in California. You are Brian Hatt from Dunkin' Brands.
I'm Jill Katsrally, Dunkin' Brands.
Address please, your address, where do you live?
In Marion.
Well, you live in Marion, I live in Marion.
One thirty Cut Covers.
Thanks.
To me, do you work a little drive, bring in Massachusetts?
On the drive-throughs, why do you leave the three lanes and not just two lanes? One for, one for speaker, which, I, what I'm, here's what I read out of it, I mean, four cars or two cars we go through while one person's talking. Is that what the top lane is on that?
The idea is that there's three order points, so there are two touchscreen kiosks and one traditional drive-through that, you know, is, is voidable. And then there's a bypass lane that goes beyond those, and that's really for the guest that's ordered from his phone, or computer, or some other mobile device, and what we're trying to do is, is to make that journey even quicker. So actually, that guest is going to basically bypass all of those kiosks since he's already ordered and paid, so that should only help the situation.
On the signage, as you know, it says, it says mobile, and then if you look that way-
It's identified on the clearance bar, the clearance bar that you just looked at would take the guest that's on the right side, and would basically instruct him to bypass all of the order points, since he's pre-ordered, and go to the pickup window. So what we're trying to do is keep some congestion away from the pickup window, so that the guests that have pre-ordered can sort of cut to the head of the line, if you will, and those guests that are ordering, whether through the traditional method or through the kiosks, which are touchscreen and will allow you to pay right there.
But the guy that pulls in and wants to get out of there is going to go through that back lane too. You pull in there, you look, you see a couple cars, you're going to, I just don't have ten minutes, five minutes, three minutes, but I gotta go. He thought he could just pull in, maybe get a seat. He's gotta go around this thing, how does he get out?
He, because the bypass lane is allowing that guest to get right up to the window, we don't anticipate that being stacked up. We think that if there's any stacking and queuing, that occurs with a guest that hasn't pre-ordered.
See, my other thing is people getting out of that lane, getting out of that back lane to get through that property. They pull in there and say, oh God, I didn't want this, I want that, I thought I could just zip through or whatever, pulled in, I don't know.
Are you thinking though, Marty, that you're, you're looking at where mobile pickup and thinking that somebody's ever going to stop there, they're never going to stop there, unless it's huge?
No, they're gonna stop there because they're gonna go to these lines. They have kiosks there now, which wasn't what I was explained to in the beginning.
No, that was already on the left side.
They were explained once, you're going to be on the left two lane. The third lane, he's supposed to drive right through. Well, it's five people and just drove right through, but there's people coming from this lane queued in, how do people get out of the back of that lot? They gotta wait their turn to get out.
There's two lanes actually coming on the bypass.
Yeah.
So you can see on the plan, there's actually two lanes that allow for that bypass or for that pre-order. So, the pre-order, the pre-order can go here, the bypass can still get around them and exit the site without, without stopping.
So that's a double lane you're saying in the back?
It's a double-
I said it's a single lane, correct?
It's shown as, it's shown, it's shown as it widens out and allows for a bypass.
Oh, outside, yes.
Yeah, alright, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. But there would never be a backup in that particular lane, as, as Tack is saying, is that they'll, they'll be allowed to essentially go around and they'll be given clearance.
Or already paid, so, so the only one that's really going to pay most likely are those free lanes, or the two lanes aren't paying, they pay right at the kiosk.
The two outside lanes will, are mobile lanes and they'll order on the, on the touchscreen, and then they'll pay by swiping their card right there, and then this particular lane will order as a standard order speaker order.
And he still pays right there if he wants to with Dunkin' Donuts card?
Yeah, the only type of payment that you could do at the kiosks would be with your card. So if you were-
The Dunkin' Donuts app or the card itself, the card itself?
You could use the app, or you could use a charge card.
So have the scanner right there to scan you, scan you.
Exactly, correct, yes.
Do you have any kiosks anywhere else, on, in a drive-through?
This will be the first.
This will be the first. It all starts in Quincy, that's what we have.
Mr. Bates?
So, I guess I'm still a little confused. First lane, drive-through, whole traditional way of doing.
Right, correct.
The next one, you touch the screen.
Correct.
Third one?
Touch the screen.
So two touchscreens.
Correct.
I'm, I'm in parking space number twelve, I decide I want to sit down, I don't want to, I don't want to drive through, I want to leave now, go to work. How do I get out?
You would, is parking space twelve on the right-hand?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, see, and that's right. So if you bypass the lane?
Right, you, you would use the bypass lane.
With the mobile guys, the app guys.
The pre, the pre-order, the pre-order goes here, comes through this lane, it goes through this area, and then it widens out, as you can see, it widens out, there's a secondary bypass area, which maybe not is clearly identified on this, on this plan as it is otherwise.
There's two kind of weirdly shaped arrows that indicate the direction of the car circulation.
Now, after we have all these different ways of paying, we still have to go to the same window to get our product.
That's correct.
And then we keep that old straight somehow, because they're highly trained people.
You raise some very interesting questions. There will be some technology to support that, and, and you're asking awesome questions.
Yeah, it's a cast scanning, it's someone video, how's that, how's that being done?
The idea is that it's done with a combination of, of video, as well as what's occurring on the touchscreen, so.
Yeah, so the idea is that at the touchscreens, the thought is that we hold the guests there until they're ready to go, that way we control traffic a bit, so if you're at the touchscreen you order, you'll be, you'll be told to go or wait, so that they'll minimize the, the traffic entering around the corner, but they'll be waiting.
Again, to, to keep that window, the pickup window-
So people can get out in the back.
So this lane, there'll always be cars moving in the outside lane constantly, no one's cars in that lane.
Mr. Bates?
Thinking before?
No, 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 I was just, you were asking something.
Yeah, so this is the first of its kind, obviously guys have done your testing to decide where you think people will fall, what's your kind of breakout in terms of traditional customer through the drive-through, touchscreen versus mobile? I mean, and if you don't, I-
Well, I, I can, I mean, I can, I can tell you, so, so the purpose of this test, this purpose of this new initiative is we want to drive more people towards on-the-go and more towards on-screen ordering and less traditional, so that's the goal. So, right, right now, we're, we're, you know, two or three percent is on-the-go, meaning phone orders, we, we hope back to grow to ten percent or so. We're not quite sure what the kiosks will, will yield, but other brands, when they have interior kiosks, they're about a third use the kiosks for other brands' interior.
Okay.
So, you know, this is-
Do you have any brands' interior that you use kiosks? I've never seen one of those.
We have, we have some interior kiosks at airports here and there, but nothing like this.
Do you have someone watching the ki, is this, is this going back to one central station somewhere, is everything on-site? So if that person's watching the kiosk?
Yeah, it'll be outside.
Or just like a McDonald's, I'm calling Oklahoma, and I push the button, the guy in Oklahoma says, okay.
No, it's, it's outside, it's all on-site.
I can visualize that whole thing happening. Non-Massachusetts employees. Twelve. Any other questions?
Have a quick one, you're open from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Does the signage go off at 10:00 PM?
If you're tied with the rest of the lights, it's, yeah, most cases everything shuts down. The signage will stay on.
So Brian, any questions?
Uh, no, I'm out of this time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor, in favor of this? First call? Second call? Third call, Paul, they have correspondence here from the DPW, it's July 28th, 2017, case number Z178, 582-598-Washington. We reviewed this middle of the above reference project, our comments, hours, follows, specify how much impervious area will be increased through the development, explain how much, how the surface monop will be discharged and treated. If there's anything further, please advise. Anyone that calls or undecided? If you step forward, say your name and address to the record, please.
Hi, we're Murphy, 19 Hershey Place.
Murphy of the floor.
Um, okay, well, I was in here for the first meeting, so I missed everything about the whole Dunkin' Donuts, but I just want to ask a question, I'm a little concerned about-
It's the first meeting I've been at.
Actually, well, I was talking, I had a, I did go to one of the-
That was, that's a place.
Okay, well, I missed that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm a little confused about, is Dr. Donut taking over the whole building that well, that he's in?
They own the whole building, I guess, they're gonna, they're looking at leasing that fifteen hundred square feet of it later on.
Okay, so that fifteen hundred square feet later on, where are these people going to park if they put something else in there? Is there parking?
Depends what it's going to be.
But is there, is there going to be parking for-
That's the layout for that property.
So there will be? Okay.
Whatever, they have thirty-seven parking spaces on this property.
For the-
Now, the new layout's got thirty-seven parking spaces.
Thirty-one.
I thought it was thirty-seven.
I think you misspoke, it says thirty-one in there.
Did you say thirty-seven?
I did, but I think you misspoke. I did, I may have missed.
I wrote down thirty-seven.
I think there's thirty-one parking spaces, but it, it actually means it complies with zoning, and we're asking for the finding relatives to the reconfiguration of the lot and reconfiguration of the building that have two uses. But that, but again, if that use needs any kind of relief or permits, they'll have to appear to the board as well. We don't anticipate they will, we believe it to be a standard kind of retail use, not, not chosen.
So is the parking in the back, or is it parking in the front?
It's everywhere. There's parking all on, it's all shown here.
Because I'm not, like, I've never seen, like, picture of, like, exactly what's going on.
Okay, this is all located here, and there's parking along this area here.
So where's the, my street?
So you're over here.
So there's going to be parking all along?
No parking here, it's all landscaping, all on, all the-
And they're coming, where's the place, where's the-
Alright, if someone else would like to speak, please step forward.
I just, one more question though, why do they have to be open till 10 o'clock? If most of the traffic is going to be coming in the morning, why do they need to stay open till 10 o'clock?
I think every Dunkin' Donuts that have been asked to open till 10, so that's what they're asking for.
So you're gonna have people coming home at break hour trying to go over to the Dunkin' Donuts? I mean-
It's for me. I know, but-
Why do they need another one on the street?
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. My name is Charles Palmer, I'm in twenty-three Hershey Place. I also own the Marshall Arts School on the corner of the, of Hershey Place and Washington Street, 582. There were four residents that were above us. I've been asked to represent the residents above us as well, as far as my business goes, and several of the people on the street that could not be here this evening. It's a great place for business. It is, and I can understand why you would want to have it here, and I can understand having that, thinking the lot is so deep. The problem with lot being so deep is when they queue their cars all the way to the back, it's going back along all of the residence and up the side. Now, you can landscape all you want, when we look out our second story window, where all our bedrooms are, this is what we're going to hear and see. You say worst-case scenario, seventeen cars being queued back there. I don't know if you can imagine seventeen cars being queued at 5:30 in the morning with all the residents on that side of the street. We've been in contact with Brad Pearl quite a bit, and he had recommended possibly asking them to put up an eight-foot fence. That's something that would be great as far as the privacy for all the first floor goes, for anybody in the first floor, but anybody on that second level is going to be looking out into a parking lot of Dunkin' Donuts. And I, I like Dunkin' Donuts, I don't really care how many there are anywhere, what I do care about is the drive-through. The drive-through is going to disrupt our lives as residents on that street, especially if you have people, I, I get one question as far as the kiosk goes. If something goes wrong at the kiosk, how does the person inside communicate with the person in the car? Say something goes wrong, you mess the order, the car doesn't go through, how do they communicate?
I'll tell you, it's happened to me, I pulled in into place and it didn't work, you just drag to, to the window and auto what you're on, and you slow up people for like five seconds.
Right. Well, this being a state-of-the-art thing, is, is there a way they communicate with them?
There is actually, there is a, we call it Lifeline, but we can trust, we can talk to somebody who needs it too. Although, we'll tell you, the, the manufacturer who uses these kiosks for all the brands has told us that that, that happens less than one percent of the time, and someone needs to contact somebody, but we do have that option.
But it does happen.
It does happen, yes.
Right, so you have a speaker where people are at 5:00 in the morning going, hey, I'll have a large black coffee, two sugars please, what did you say? Large black coffee, and this is what you're hearing in the parking lot, and I know they moved it as far as they can over, that's great. And then, say something happens in the parking lot, now they're communicating back and forth, possibly. What, our neighborhood is being disrupted. So we're not opposed to the Dunkin' Donuts, we're opposed to the drive-through. We understand that, and if you can see the layout of the land, we're all, this is that, this is, this is the front here?
Yeah.
Right, so they're going along, and right here you have Pennon Towers, all residential, you have a handicap facility right here.
We've all been there, right into the problem.
Okay, so then you know all this is residents right here. So our concern as a neighborhood is- Resident's V, yes. Even though it's all residential. All right, that's it. So we're just concerned about our lifestyle at this point, you know, I, I can be honest with you, I'm not a morning person, I, I'm a musician, I play at night, so morning is the most important time for me, so staying open, don't stay open till 10 o'clock doesn't bother me, but every single person on the street is concerned about that 5:00 in the morning, when they're opening up and cars going through and communication, and if you're in on Hershey Place, people from Maggie's, the, the, the bar across the street, that acts as a funnel for sound through that whole parking lot, so you can be scanning in the parking lot and wait in a corner, and hear every single word that's being said on the patio bags, and some, some interesting conversations. But we're concerned, we're concerned about our sleeping, also about our values for our homes. I'm not sure if it's going to increase or decrease, but I can't imagine me trying this on my house or the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot with the drive-through and going, gee, they only start at 5:00 in the morning, so that's our concerns, I hope you can address them and we can work something out. Thank you.
I'd suggest you, you do five in the morning. You said address them, you asked me, my board to address them, what do you suggest?
Well, I'm just about our concern as far as sound goes. Eight-foot fence, that's possibly, what kind of, we're, we're kind of unclear about what is there.
I was told there was an eight-foot fence going over there, is that correct or not?
There's fencing, does stockade fencing, do stockade fencing along the back, you know, on the side on Hershey Place? And we widened up, we didn't do an eight-foot fence, because eight-foot fence requires separate relief from the board.
Exactly, but I thought, that's what you-
Look, I, I said that, that was mentioned to us by Brad Pearl from the neighbors' concerns, so that's something that we can entertain, if the board felt as though that was appropriate.
Mr. Bates, have something?
I was going to say, Chuck will be pulling, he said you're a musician, and you sleep in the morning, because my son is, he's a playwright, and Chuck will be saying, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bates, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, calls are undecided?
Daniel Willbach, and I live at 91 Curtis Avenue. I just bought the house a couple months ago, and it's been really, really quiet. I'm a retired school teacher, so I, I really appreciate the quiet neighborhood, and I am very, very worried about the drive-through. I understand it's- I understand it's commercially zoned, but obviously, they are, they need a variance to do the drive-through, and I think the drive-through is going to be a big, big problem. And again, I agree with Chuck that, you know, I don't, wouldn't be appreciative of waking up at, you know, 5:00 in the morning with two sugars and cream or whatever. You know, they all have to pick up their coffee and their donuts, and there's going to be some conversation at that window. So I'm very, very worried as if I'm in a butter or I live right in the back of the lobby area. So I would like to see no drive-through. That is really what, I would like to see, I've talked to Brad Crowell about that, and I'm also, they're not here, but I'm worried about those disabled adults who live next to me and the, you know, many, many older people who live in the towers. So very concerned about this neighborhood, which has been very quiet and peaceful up until this point. I'm worried about the values of the homes there as well.
Daniel's full back. Is there anyone else? Calls are on the side?
I'd just like to make a quick comment, please.
Go ahead, John.
Has anything changed on that attorney from the previous meeting that we had?
John, John, address the board.
Okay, my suggestion was basically, when you look at the picture here, was to take the parking lot and make the employee parking lot back here and move the whole drive-through thing forward. This is going to be like for employees, and that would get that away. They want it longer so they can have more people in line. But basically, you know, picture a truck with their exhaust making a lot of noise sitting there. You know, it would move it all down. It's a huge parking lot. I mean, that, this could be employee parking in the back, and it would just make their drive-through line short, but it would get that kiosk thing, would move those two things there more forward, you know? And then there was the dumpster issue, so just make sure that the dumpster is not in the corner near the people that live there. But, I mean, it seems like they're going to have a drive-through. Every Dunkin' Donuts wants a drive-through, and unfortunately, they might come back here again in the future and say, we want to open 24 hours. Once it's there and it's open, I don't ever see that Dunkin' Donuts closing. So, you know, it looks like this is going to happen. Give the neighbors some relief and make them move that drive-through window away from them. It's a huge lot. So didn't look like they changed the design at all. They seem receptive to it, but you guys can make them do that, which is what zoning, and you guys can make them do an eight-foot fence. I mean, they're asking for zoning relief, so give them the zoning relief.
Thank you, John.
An eight-foot fence or even a 10-foot fence. I mean, I'm sure you guys would grant that easily.
10-foot works. 10-foot, yes. That'd be great.
Can I just ask one question? What time will they be doing now?
Say your name and address again. Please come up. We're recording this, and we have to take this.
Sorry, Adrian Murphy, 19 Hursey Place. What time will they be doing deliveries? Like, are they going to be coming 4:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning to drop off, making deliveries or has this working?
The only time, they're open from 5:00 AM to 10:00. So that's what I would hope deliveries are during...
They're not going to be before you open?
Hours.
They'll be, they'll be doing deliveries probably about 4:00 AM. They're normally through from the front.
4:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
Where they deliver from 4:00 in the morning?
The donuts.
Huh?
The donuts.
You don't make them on-site? I'm believing you.
Do yours are?
You're totally lost. I got a totally different outlook in there.
That's why they gave rid of the donut.
I know the small ones didn't, but a big place like this...
About company secrecy. That's why they call it...
So you're going to have to be chuckling that word now?
Now I know why it's not Dunkin' Donuts. I ain't no donut.
At the front. You can get it at the front of the building, not at the back.
It's going to be delivered to the farm?
Right, yes.
No deliveries. And what about the garbage? What time are they coming? They come early in the morning, too?
They usually don't come that early. We can arrange, I mean, we, if they put guidelines on it, we'll...
City ordinance is after 7:30 AM. Well, the police, the garbage truck is there like at 5:00 in the morning. So how is that possible? Call Brad and call the special services. Okay. Jay, who's back? You got that?
Anyone, anyone else? Calls are on the side? Second call? Third call? Call up, you know, call, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I keep forgetting Brad ain't here.
Good evening. I'm pitch-hitting Margaret Morris, 236 Rock Island Road, Board One Councillor. Pitch-hitting Brad Crowell, who just had Brian Connor, who's in meeting today. So I took copious notes of your conversation and texting Brad to play-by-play, and I guess I just wanted to make sure Brad's concerns were voiced to the board, I'm sure, and expressed that Brad had an administrative meeting. A lot of the concerns that you just heard were concerns that Brad had raised, and I think he submitted some comments in writing. The eight-foot fence was something that he would want to consider. I understand Adeland Safety in the Back queue was looking to pull the drive-through back. I understand the short queue, I mean, these are kind of the issues that he had sent, the shorter queue, pulling the drive-through off the residential area. What opportunity existed if there are any changes? Concerns about the noise and delivery times, if those have been addressed. The other thing to, I wanted to make sure that is pointed out, though, is Mr. Carvallo and his family are some of the city's best corporate citizens, and they deserve some credit for all the philanthropy that they do in the city. So I just want to, for the neighbors, one of the things that we hear when we have a business owner come into the city is he owns multiple properties in the city. I have his cell phone, Brad, this is his cell phone. When we call him, there's a problem, he calls us right back. I'll tell you, I very rarely call Mr. Carvallo, there's no problems. He operates very good businesses, and he'll be a great neighbor to you. So I think for us as Board Councillors, it's, do I know how to get in touch with the property owner? Do you know how to get if there's an issue? And let's nip it in the bud, and I can vouch for Mr. Carvallo and say, he's an amazing corporate citizen. He's a great contributor to Quincy and to Quincy Point. He owns other businesses in the area, and will be very responsive. Personally, I'm more of a traditionalist. I don't know that I can hold on the go as big a block to me, but I do like to say that Quincy being the first is the first, and Mr. Carvallo also owns the original Dunkin' Donuts. You know, what this new technology brings is a benefit to the community. But here, a lot of people are on their concerns, and just here to voice those on behalf of Brad. Thank you.